Meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2014. Three of the roll call please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely? Here. Please join me in my place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna have a Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We've discovered the falls video that's gonna be presented to us.
Walk down Main Street in Oregon City and you'll hit a dead end at a complex of hollow industrial buildings. No people, no cars, not even the hum of a machine. Oregon began here. Behind this shell, North America's second most powerful waterfall roars through the Willamette River, carrying salmon and lamprey. For longer than any of us can remember, this has been a sacred place for Native Americans. Generations of workers made flour, wool, and paper on this land. But as industry grew, we lost our connection with the force that created it. For more than a century, Willamette Falls has been the most spectacular place we don't visit. That's about to change. A thousand people moved to 2001. Thousands of Oregonians came together to shape the future of Willamette Falls. They imagined a project that would do justice to the beauty of this place, that would honor the past and speak to the future. With your help, this vision is becoming a reality. It will be discovered.
And we, Commissioner Scott, saw this earlier, he sent to us, and I thought it was an excellent presentation.
It's amazing, yeah, it's great.
I think it's tremendous.
Yeah.
It gives the indication of how we felt when we saw the 175 people losing their jobs and everything, but, and did a great job of moving us from that point and to a, looking to the future access that we will have. I think, uh, you want to say anything about who, whom it was that actually produced it?
I'm putting you on the spot, sorry.
They did such a great job, you know?
Yeah, um, I'll have to get back, I don't have anything in front of me on that part of it.
Yeah.
But it was cooperation between, with us and Metro staff, um, and hopefully they'll come to me here in a second, and the consulting firm that we worked with to help put that, that, for calling a viral video together, to really try and, you know, acknowledge where we've been and where we're heading and what the aspirations are for the project.
Yeah, did a wonderful presentation.
And I think we just wanted, one other part was that the public hearings are starting for the adoption, and the planning commission's first hearing is next Monday, September 8th. They'll have another one on the, on the 15th, and if a third one's necessary, it'll be on the 22nd, and then we hope to have it in front of the city commission for their first hearing on October 15th, followed by November 5th, and then the 19th if necessary.
Very good.
Nice.
With that, is the time to, if we have any citizens' comments or items that are not on the agenda, and I hear, I see Karen Mori wishes to speak to us.
Karen Mori, resident of Oregon City. My annual opportunity to say thank you. We have had the 19th Annual Oregon City Open Air Antique Fair on Sunday, August 24th. We did return to Main Street this year. We've had a few hurdles. One of the things we observed, we had fewer shoppers. However, our vendors informed us that every shopper had an open wallet, so we had very, very happy vendors.
Good.
So, have to go down my list here. We worked very closely with Public Works throughout this entire event, so thank you to John Lewis. It was our first opportunity to work with Martin Montalvo, who then ran away for must, for a month for military duty. So, due to that, we got to work with our old friends, Kevin Hanks, Matt Paulson, and Gabe Camacho. And Gabe was there in the dark, Sunday morning, wanting to know anything we needed, and we always appreciate seeing Gabe. We also thank Public Works staff Lisa and Linda, who helped me get through some things with banners, and John Knapp, who was very patient with me as we worked through the right-of-way permit, which we, a process we actually hadn't had to go through in the past. Then, the smiling faces up here in front of me. In the dark on Sunday morning, Commissioners Betty Mom and Carol Polly showed up, ready to go plant signs throughout Oregon City, letting everyone know the antique fair was that day. The ever lovely Dan Holiday helped out, including with traffic control. Mayor Neely, my excellent Block 8 captain, did his usual wonderful work in his two verses of "Oh What a Beautiful Morning."
I know, I know. I'm like, oh my god.
He learned the second one for us.
You might mention I also blew it.
Uh, we won't discuss that. And also, our other two block captains, Claire Mett and Victoria Alley. We had two new volunteers this year in a very helpful position. They were kind of the street captains who worked with the kids from Journey Theater Arts to help get things set up, and that was Ray Stobie of Oregonians Credit Union and Derek Metzen from Green Box Architecture, and they did a wonderful job of being crew bosses. Again, thank you to Journey Theater Arts Group. Those kids had stayed up all night just to be ready to go, and they were there doing everything we needed to set up. And in the afternoon, the Oregon City Evangelical Church Middle School Group with Josh Shelton show up, clean up, and leave the streets of Oregon City cleaner than we found them in, early on Sunday morning. We want to thank our, many of our volunteers. This year, we actually had two new volunteers, Kimberly Rush of Coffee Rush and her husband Jaren, and every time I turned around, they were filling in somewhere that they were needed. We also had other Main Street business people who participated this year in a committee that was chaired by Sherry Henson of Columbia Bank. We need to thank B&amp;B Lacing for their annual donation of recycling and garbage service. Jonathan Stone, who offered to lend us an easy outfit that we never used, but we did use all of his sign holders, and I noticed Jonathan back and forth on the road all day looking for where he was needed. And this year, we worked with Christie Rhine from Maisy Mae's Antiques and Treasures to do our appraisals, so it was wonderful to be able to work with a local business. Coincidentally, the mother of one of my clerks at the Plaid Pantry was thrilled because Christie apparently found that something she brought in was quite valuable.
Oh, nice.
And is doing additional work on it. So, it was another fun year, working with our Main Street businesses, working with our electeds and others, and we want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you. I think the first two or three years, it was a project that was funded by the urban renewal, not the urban renewal, excuse me, the hotel motel taxes through the city, and I think at one point, we requested the chamber to do, take on that responsibility, and you've done a great job.
Which also reminds me, I forgot to thank you to those of you who sit on the OCCIT Board, because that funding is definitely helpful to us, it allows us to do additional advertising and more outreach than we could do just under the normal budget.
This was the 20th?
This is the 19th. Next year will be the 20th. So, anybody who knows any antique vendors, line them up now.
I'm sure that, I'm sure they'll be coming back.
Oh, every vendor this year will be more than happy to be back, we just want them all to bring friends.
Oh, nice, nice.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any reason not to adopt the agenda?
I wanted to pull one off of the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
AD.
AD. I think it's a good idea, because we need, we need a reminder what a non-remonstrous agreement is sometimes, so that's, that's good.
And why we have it.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead with the, the rest of the agenda. We start off with a proposed new police department facility, and throw that your direction, and you'll probably throw it another direction.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I gotta start by saying, I was driving down here for this meeting, knowing that we were gonna be talking about this, and I remembered, I came here and interviewed, I was hired in 1999, and there's a couple different interviews, and between two of the things that you were doing, Sergeant Smith was walking me through the police facility, and kind of showing me, and we were talking a little bit, and he was telling me how this was a temporary police building, and that anyone was gonna be built, blah, blah, blah. And I was thinking, I'm driving down here now to present this, and I thought of that, I had no idea that day that someday we'd be sitting here.
And look at where you're at. Awesome.
Well, did it take this long, actually? Did it be?
You were hoping we would have light speed on that.
I was hoping, anyway.
Yes.
So, just is a little bit of history, you have, you have seen pieces of this in smaller groups. What has basically changed is, it's, it's a completed project now, which includes the pricing of what our facility is, and, and then some of the treatment about the Mount Pleasant School, which has been shaped basically by some of your feedback, and then some from the community as well. Just for the sake of, of a reminder and getting everybody on the same page, what our agreement with McKinsey was, is when, when myself and my group started looking at, at this issue and how we were gonna deal with this issue moving forward, I, I think that it had, well, it had always been assumed that a new police department would be put on the site that we're at, up there, which is just over two usable acres. And we, as, as I was educating myself a little bit about seeing different projects that were being built, new projects, there kinda came into this question about whether or not, it just didn't seem like we had enough property. And so, for a variety of reasons, we went out for a contract to get somebody to tell us what, what we needed to address current and then future needs for a police department, whether or not our site would work, and included was, if our site's not gonna work, as sites came up in the future, potential sites that we could buy, that they would, there was some pricing in there to have McKinsey look at different sites and tell us whether or not it would be a good, a good fit. So, kind of, in the middle of all this, the Mount Pleasant conversation came up, and so instead of looking at a variety of sites, we had one very good site to have them look at. So, that, that was kind of where our contract with McKinsey was. What do we need? How much is it gonna cost? And what size property would we need? So, we had that information as, as we moved forward to figuring out how we're gonna pay for something, and that sort of stuff. And then, as we bought the Mount Pleasant site, realizing the size of it, and knowing that we can't just deal with what's right in front of us, but what is the city gonna need in the future? We don't need eight, eight and a half, 8.3 acres, whatever it was, but what, what else will the city need in the future? And that led to a conversation about future city buildings, you know, whether it's 10, 15, 20 years down the road, we didn't know, but it's good planning. And then, that led to their analysis of some work down with City Hall too, and just determining some future needs so we could design the site. So, I'm gonna turn it over. Brett Hanson and Scott Moore, great guys from McKinsey, I'm gonna let them talk, sell themselves and their organization, and present this project that we've been working on for several months.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, I'm Brett Hanson, with me Scott Moore, we're project managers with McKinsey. We actually are on, run with Jeff Humphries, our public projects team, and we specialize in emergency response facilities, primarily police facilities, with also emphasis on city halls, fire stations, and so forth. So, it's a, it's a pleasure being here this evening. As the chief has pointed out, it's been an evolution of a study from the beginning, it's been an exciting one, and this evening marks our formal presentation to you with regards to the report that we were tasked with performing. It's been a collaboration originally set out with the police department and municipal court, expanded further into collaboration with the, the city hall and the city hall staff to look at their needs in the future as well, which was a terrific opportunity. And then, construction-focused, Inc. was our cost estimator for the project, which kind of wrapped up the study. Our primary goals, as the chief pointed out, was first to come on board, meet with the department, examine the existing building, look at the police department as well as the municipal court, and then go through space needs analysis, and looking at all the program requirements for the police department as well as the court, which also included an examination of site requirements. Lastly, as the chief pointed out, the city was offered an opportunity, or came about, for the Mount Pleasant site, which is a terrific, terrific site in our opinion, and, and that was also brought to the table to take a look at, both the site as well as the building itself. Lastly, based on that particular site, we were asked and tasked with a conceptual design, not only to give us a sense of how the site might be test-fitted, how the site would be test-fitted, but also the vision behind what this facility and what the site could be, and then leading into our, our last item there, our goal of identifying potential costs, which we'll present to you this evening as well. The first slide you'll see here is, is our initial assessment, looking at the existing building, which is located at 320 Warner Mill, which is just down the road from the site that we're actually looking at, which is the Mount Pleasant School site, which is noted as proposed site. One key feature that, that certainly excited us was the proximity, the location of it. As we went through this process, we, we talked much in depth of visioning and the evolution of the city, the history of the city, and Scott will talk about that further, but the location of the site really offered up opportunity for connecting these different pieces. Also noted is other city governments, such as, we have the city hall, the new library, which is a very exciting project coming up, and then also any county services for collaboration Our next primary component was to go through and perform a needs analysis. This is an abbreviated version of the primary components that we looked at. The, the main report, as you have in front of you, is composed of all the pieces of this puzzle. The main pieces that we've shown here is public, municipal court, police for the building itself, and then you'll see that there's parking both for court staff as well as public and police secure. And then lastly, as the evolution of the project came about, we were asked to look at the city hall needs as well, in an effort with the amount of space that we have available on the Mount Pleasant School site, to ensure that the city is looking further down the road. As the chief pointed out, whether that's five, 10, 15 years, that's the opportunity to master plan the site. You'll note here that we're, we've identified existing square footage, 2015, which would be move-in, in theory, and then 2035, of course, planning for the future, so looking 20 years out, both for staffing as well as the projected square footages. The two graphics to your right, we've added to the slides for you, if you haven't seen these before. Really, the, the top graphic there is simply a graphic to represent the available square footage of the existing site, and this, simply reflecting on that site, if you were only place municipal court needs for 2035 and the police department. This doesn't account for any stormwater treatment offers and so forth, and you quickly observe that the site is at capacity. The, the next site, or next graphic down, the Mount Pleasant School site, is it reflective of the great opportunity that that site offers, just by the sheer scale, it's relatively flat? That reflects, in the yellow there, not only the municipal court and the police department and its site needs, but also planning into the future for the city hall, so it immediately reflects that, space requirement-wise, we're taking up approximately half the site, which then offers us opportunity, and we had many discussions on what other amenities, what other big-picture program elements could be brought to the table, whether that's public amenities that, that could be brought, such as playfields, pavilions, basketball courts. We talked about pretty much everything under the sun, and thinking a few, further down the line as a public involvement to help identify those. Equally as important, if not more important, is what we've noted there is future growth, ensuring that we're not only simply planning for the future growth into 2035 for all these, these city functions, but also ensuring that down the road, you also have available space for growth well beyond that. Those initial 20 years, we're really talking, we're wanting to plan, and really needing to plan around 50 to 100 years, and as far as we're concerned, why stop there? So, the next task, as we, we developed this, was not just to look at, could it fit? Our initial task here is, reflects the Mount Pleasant School site, and this is simply a diagram of all the little pieces we, we examined when it comes to the site, whether that's sun, solar, wind, traffic, intersections. But our initial tack was, task was also to look at the buildings on-site. We understand, and we were very involved with, and understanding the history of the school itself, and the importance of it to its community, immediate as well as the city. So, that was very important to us. We were also from the police department, the city stance, were tasked with coming in and providing an objective observation and review of that building, as it could be cited or, or infilled with the city police department itself, or other city functions. So, our initial, initial task was to look at the building from a structural capacity, architectural, and then observation of the building systems. The existing school, as you see there in the brown on the upper portion, and then the small rectangular box, which is the annex building, was expanded over multiple years, with the last, and third expansion occurring in the 50s, which resulted in quite a few alterations to the, to it and its form. It's very school-like in, in nature, as it should be. So, that was our, our first review, was to look at it, how could the, and should the, the police department itself go into it? So, we've noted a few observations off to the side. The first distinction with the police department itself is to understand its requirement from a structural capacity, and then the need for it to be an essential facility under current code, which is for emergency response facilities. And some of the, the items or the key elements that we noted for the building itself, which were disadvantages to locating the police department there, was, was immediately the seismic deficiencies, unreforced masonry, the disjointed nature of the building, and how it's been brought together, and the additions made it challenging, if not impossible, and that certainly costs prohibitive to actually upgrade it to an essential facility to meet the needs of the police department. Other aspects that we, we discussed and observed were hazardous materials in the building, so certainly a cost to abate that. Systems were particularly the boiler in the basement, if any of you have seen that.
Oh, yeah.
Are, are at their, their lifespan, and along with a number of systems in the building, so a gutting and initialization to come in and retrofit those. Effective space use. As we look at the program requirements, we also talk about adjacencies and the operational requirements of a police department, or any city function, and where those are located, how they are located, to maximize efficiencies with the, with the use of the building, which are certainly challenged by the, the, the nature of it and the footprint. Maintenance and operation costs were a component that we discussed. Well, we didn't get into the details of what those were. The police department and the city did look at that, as far as maintaining the building and operational costs over the course of the next few years or in the future. And then, lastly, was certain, just simply looking at it from a best use perspective for the building as well as the site. Based on those components, our recommendation, initial observation was, this is not the best use of the building for police department, and, and that the city would be best served by examining and locating a new facility on-site for the police department. That was our initial step that we discussed. Our next step, which through the evolution of the discussions, was to, to look at it for potential use of a future city hall relocation on the expansion. It was immediate, it was recognized that there is a need for growth there, and could this building be served to that capacity? So, we, we met with the city, we went through that assessment as well. We, we met, we did a number of different site analysis, and at the end of the day, we had two primary discussions. First was locating a new facility in the interim, where, and, and how could it be located, particularly if you leave this, the existing building there? And is that the best use of the site itself? The second component was, in the future, is this, would this existing building be best served as a city hall? And one key component of that came about, and that was the discussion of this building also meeting, or the city, future city hall meeting similar seismic standards and operational standards as the police department. In theory, if the police department is, is to essential facility standards, and the city hall, while upgraded, is not, in the event of a seismic disaster, one would be operational, the other would, would not. Is that what the city's vision would be for, for this potential site? And the end discussion there was that in, the city would require, at least request, the city hall also meet the same standards that, that the police department would. Based on those considerations, it was also determined that the existing building would not also suffice for a future city hall as, as well as a police department. With those components, we were tasked with expanding our examination of the site with the idea of deconstructing the existing school, taking into consideration, which Scott will talk about in a moment, the visioning aspects of how do you preserve and, and honor the, the history and the school itself, and how do you roll that into the design of, of the site for the future civic center site? That'll turn to Scott.
So, as we completed the initial analysis to determine the size of the facilities, to determine the suitability of the Mount Pleasant site and the existing school, and the feasibility of replacing the existing school with the new facilities, we started to really look into what this project could, the vision that this project could create for the community. And through those discussions with the city, we, we landed on a number of different attributes that we felt were very important as this project moves forward, and they're labeled here in front of you, and I'll kind of summarize them to the, to the best of my ability, but first and foremost, interweaving the rich history of the school, community, the site itself, and poli, and, and the police in, in Oregon City. The police department, as many of you know, is one of the oldest, or the oldest west of the Rockies, and so there's a lot of history that comes with that. And the, the Oregon City in general has probably more history to, to, to lean on than most southern communities in this, in this region. And from that point, from that perspective, we felt that it's extremely important to be able to honor that history, not, not just specifically from the standpoint of the city in general, but also taking into account the historical aspect of the site itself, and taking an appropriate measure to honor its past. Looking at ways to create a positive first impression for the public. A lot of times, people envision public facilities as authoritarian places that they don't typically like to go to, and you see now in more modern public facilities that there's a strong emphasis on connectivity, strong emphasis on how, how the architecture can support the ideals of the community, and how it can create an open and welcome environment for the public to participate in. Looking at the opportunities for the facilities to become a model for future buildings in Oregon City. So, this is a great opportunity to really utilize this project to define how Oregon City evolves over the next hundred years. How can this project be a catalyst for informing future development down the road? Providing spaces both inside and outside of the building that are desirable amenities for the community. And one of the things that Brett mentioned is, because of the size of the site, there's opportunities there to provide community, community features that support a lot of the conditions that the community currently uses the, the site for. It's currently used now quite often for recreation, whether or not it's soccer, or, you know, people walking their dogs, or, you know, it's, it's not just a school anymore, in fact, it's not a school more technically, but.
It's not.
But it, it has more than just a educational presence, it has more of a community presence than, than that. And so, trying, and so looking at opportunities to enforce that within the community is, is a strong defining characteristic of this project. Creating an authentic building that captures the values and aspirations of the community. We, one of the, one of the things that we talked in great length about is, you know, the look of this building should be reflective of the community. We're not trying to change the, the environment of the community, we're trying to support it and reinforce it. And the architecture and the appearance of the building can go a long way to doing that. Cultivating a sense of permanence by selecting materials that will not go out of style, similar to the last topic, you know, timeless architecture, timeless building, a building that will remain relevant over its lifespan, are all important key, key factors to consider. And then lastly, expressing the idea of transparency in government. And then lastly, expressing the idea of transparency in government. So as we start to look at some of the development of the concept design, we really wanted to emphasize the fact that we're not closing ourselves off to the community, we're welcoming the community, and the buildings themselves should reflect that. So with that, a couple of, some of the imagery that we started to develop as we started to kind of formulate these visions, you know, first and foremost is the history. So looking at the Mount Pleasant School and the history behind it as a really strong defining element into the development of these particular, of the particular scheme. Now, we didn't obviously keep the structure, but I think that the approach that we're taking is looking at the opportunities to honor the structure and honor its past with the new project. Looking at the police department's commitment to the community and their involvement within the community and creating a welcome place for the community to engage with, to be engaged with the police department and supported by the police department. Looking at how we can design the site to help support not only the community nature of the project, but use it as an opportunity to create interesting areas that can provide serenity, interesting areas that can provide places to gather, places to mingle, places to meet people. I think there's a lot of opportunities given the size of the property to be able to develop little areas like that. Transparency in the building, looking at utilizing expanses of glass in the right locations to help provide levels of connectivity, both from the interior and the exterior. I think that equally as important as being able to see in the buildings is being able to see out of the buildings when you're inside of them.
I have a question about the windows.
Sure.
These, this is an example, but I know that the citizens will quite frequently comment on Clackamas County's buildings up there and all the windows and all the lights are on all the time.
Sure, sure.
But I'm sure that you guys have
Sure, yeah.
A way to address that.
Yeah, so typically, a lot of, the lighting would be designed so that it's, we'd have cut-off fixtures so that we're not having light pollution outside of our property.
Okay.
The lighting in the building would be, you'd be able to zone the lighting so that you can manipulate how much light is on at certain times of the day.
Okay.
So, you know, really, there will be, there would be a section of the facility that's operating 24 hours a day, but there'd be a section that's not as active.
Yeah, okay.
And when you, when we start to talk about the concept design, we'll start to describe where those, where a lot of that windows, those windows occur.
Thank you.
Yeah. But the basic idea is to, is to allow for connectivity between the uses of the site. Looking at integrating interesting detailing into the design of both the building and the site. These are just a couple of examples, but there's a lot of really creative ways that you can create just very interesting, unique attributes to a project that both serve as a design component, but also help support requirements that are going, that are going to be subject to your project, like how you may detail your stormwater management facilities or
I like the brick.
How you might, how you might
That's very cool.
Yeah. How you might detail, you know, security measures and things like that.
Yeah.
So there's, I think, looking at, looking at very creative ways to be able to implement some of these strategies is a goal. You'll see that, you'll see that as we look at it. As we roll into the, from the discussioning of the visioning, the discussioning of the uses that are going, would be mixed on the site, we realize that this is a spaced project. This is, there are going to be steps along the way that would need to be taken to fully realize the overall vision for the property. Initially, we're talking about police and courts. And so looking at the opportunity to phase in police and courts and their associated needs while retaining the area necessary for city hall and their associated needs in the future was a real driving factor in how the site was organized. And this is, this, what you see in front of you now is phase one of the development. And what that starts to reflect is the main police and court facility, there are numbered eight and one, one and 13 there, that are fronting onto a large public plaza, number three and 12. The public plaza would have a nice water feature. The primary, the primary police parking would reside behind the structure in a secure area labeled number nine, with the public parking up front labeled number, it's up front there. And as we looked, as we looked at how, how we started to integrate the site features with the community aspect to the property and the building, the building placement, we started to conceive of this idea of this historic progression from one end to the other. So on the left-hand side of that diagram, what you start to see is a lot of the community-related functions. So up in the upper-left corner, item number eight would be a grass playfield. So community uses for youth soccer or things of that nature could be supported in those areas. Potentially a covered pavilion noted number six there could reside as kind of a focal point of the community aspect to that side of the property. It could be, could be designed to take in a lot of the attributes of the existing school or other historic aspects of the community. And adjacent to the, that structure, we conceived of maybe the idea of having an outdoor basketball court. Oregon City is very well-known for their, for their basket, for their women's basketball in particular, but it's a very, it's a very popular pastime here in this area, and I think that it's very reflective of the community. And so using, providing some facilities there that start to emulate that idea, we felt were a really strong feature and attribute to this particular project. As we work, as you work from left to right, there would be a long, a promenade that would start to engage the visitors as they progress towards the building along a kind of a discovery path that would describe, that would, that we could use to describe the history of the site. There's been a number of different, there's been a number of different thoughts about what that might entail, from either elements of the old school that could have plaques that recognize all the names and teachers and faculty of the school through its history, possibly integrating some other attributes of Oregon City along that way. But looking at, looking that, looking at that element as a, as a really defining circulation space that will reflect the history of the site and help reinforce what was there prior to this, prior to this development. And every, and all of that, all of that terminates and ends at the public plaza. And the public plaza has been designed to capture the essence of the old Mount Pleasant School. You'll start to see that in some of the, some of the renderings, but taking pieces of that school and the historic forms of that school, the pitched roof, the bell, things that are indicative of that historic schoolhouse, and placing that in kind of the culmination in the, in the, in the center of the development of the facilities. As we look at, as we look at phase two, you can see how we start to integrate in the remainder of the program for city hall and the associated parking related to that. It actually starts to create a really strong center between the two structures, and they start to really kind of play off of one another and support, support, and provide the backdrop and support one another. And it really starts to allow for a strong central gathering space for the community to be able to gather and access any of these, either of these structures, a strong civic, civic presence between the two. And it really starts to, and starts to be, it starts to talk about how we start to define the edge along Lynn Avenue, how it becomes a little bit more of a defined edge element, a little bit more, not necessarily an urban treatment, but certainly more substantial than a rural kind of housing facade.
I do like the interaction with the youth, and I went to the Camby Police Station, and they have a, is it a soccer, or no, it's a skateboard park right next to it? And it seemed like for years, we always kind of hid the police away and didn't want to expose them to the kids or something, and, and now it seems like everybody's kind of bringing the police out, and I like that. It's great.
Well, I think, I think that part of, part of the people's, part of people's fear of law enforcement is that typically when they see them, they're responding to something negative.
Yeah.
So being out in the open, being present, being visible, I think gives the community a different sense of what they're there for.
I agree, and I just think it's great that that's happening.
You know, one thing on that, there was a lot of time spent and a lot of listening that we did. In terms of the site and the way that this is laid out, we have been very concerned about the building initially and about people's reaction to that. What I did not foresee was how strongly people felt about the green space
Oh, yeah.
And the open space. So as we're having these discussions about leaving the old building and well, you can put a city hall here, leave the old building, leave, so, well, we're going to run out of all of our green space.
Yeah.
So what, the whole idea has been, in addition to what we're building, what, the school's going away, so having the community not have a sense of something leaving, but, but what is improving, what is coming to our city?
Yes.
And so there was a lot of time and effort spent just on that left-hand side that has nothing to do with the police department, because if you live in that community or anywhere in this city, what, what's coming?
Right.
As opposed to what's going away.
Right, right. I love it, yeah.
And the idea is to, is to have some definition to those areas, but leave it flexible so it can be used for a number of different purposes.
Absolutely.
So you kind of see in that area where the number 10 is, it's a little bit lighter gray. The idea is that we wouldn't have hard curbs and things of that nature in that space. It would be kind of an open space with some trees kind of strategically placed throughout that could be used for a number of different purposes besides parking. So now we'll get into some of kind of the renderings and some of the exterior character of the building. This is a bird's eye view, I'll say from the, what is that, the northwest or southwest, looking back towards the police facility and the public plaza. And you start to see kind of the relationship of the building to the plaza, the connection of the main promenade, and some of these elements that start to kind of slice through that, that, that area that starts, start to key in on some of the historic attributes that the site previously contained. At the end, at the end of that, in the plaza area, you can see on the end, just beyond where the flagpoles are there, and on the front end too, are some elements that are starting to acknowledge the Mount Pleasant School, bringing in some of those historical elements to reflect on the history that was once there.
Scott, before you move on, can I, I want to mention something just as a refresher because as we're talking about basketball courts and how pretty all this stuff looks, I don't want anybody in the community to think that this is about us having nicer offices or basketball courts and stuff.
That's a big point, yeah.
That this, a building for us is a tool, and it's, and just briefly, if you've been to our police department, the way that it works now, if you're a crime victim, if you're a sex offender, if you're going to court, if you want to make a complaint about an officer, any business that you do, everybody walks in through the same front door.
Yeah, and it's sad because
It's confusing.
You're sitting there, well, you're sitting there telling your sad story, and all these people around you are watching and listening.
Well, and the whole confusion part from the get-go. So the design, as you're walking in, courts on the top floor, places on the bottom floor.
Right.
That simplifies a lot of things for people. That, that little back door that you see right there, that if, and this is from things that happen at other places, other newer buildings that, that are put in, we have, depending on what numbers you see, but we have over 250 sex offenders in town, and they have to register every year, anytime there's a change of address. Sometimes people register here who don't even live here.
Right.
It's a state law. But having, having sex offenders register in the back where they're not, and it happens all the time, where you will go out front and whoever's next, and so-and-so, I'm here to register, and you see three or four people have been sitting next to them.
And they're like, oh my god.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And maybe they're in danger, maybe they're not.
Yeah.
But that fear.
That fear.
And, and everybody who comes into our police department, maybe they're only going to come in one time in their life.
Yes.
But when they come in that one time, it might be the worst doggone thing that ever happened to them.
Right.
And so their experience when they walk in that front door is, that's the tool that we're building to help us do that, do our job right, so we can, the second they come in, they're in a safe place, it's clear where they're going, we've got rooms that are private right out of the front door, we can come right in here, it's private, close the door, how can I help you? So I just, I wanted to say that briefly because it's not, it's about doing our job.
Yeah.
There's, we're making it good for the community in other ways, but the whole point is, is putting us in a place where officers are doing, are doing the best they can for the public.
Yes. Thank you.
I have one question. Are there going to be more renderings coming up at the police department?
Yeah, there's more renderings.
Yeah, I'll wait until the end.
Okay. Okay. This next rendering is a shot from Lynn Avenue looking back towards the police facility. So this, this rendering here starts to show some of the treatments, I guess a little bit closer detail of the treatment of the plaza area and how the transparency of the main lobby into the police facility and courts engages within that space. The, you know, we heard a lot of comments, we've gone through a number of iterations on this, on the plaza and looking at how to best honor the Mount Pleasant School. We heard a lot of comments from the community about, you know, what they, how they envisioned that might be able to be possible. And so what we're, what we're looking at is, you know, taking pieces of it, either from just a simple materials, materialistic standpoint and repurposing it, or physical elements of the school itself, and starting to, starting to kind of encompass that plaza area with those, with those elements. And pulling in some of the defining architectural geometries of the building, so you can see in that element kind of closer to the building, there's what appears to be kind of a 45-degree angle pitched roof, which is very indicative of the facility. There's the arched entryway there that is very indicative of the main entry of the building. So pulling in a lot of those architectural characteristics to help honor that structure. And then I think on the, on the closest panel in this rendering, there is a historic placard on that facility that I believe is actually right in that location. So we would be keeping it in its, in the location that it resides currently. But using, but this, but this starts to really start to show the connectivity between the spaces and how the building starts to address the street and how that can support some of the activity going on in front and around it.
Scott, that, just a couple of little things. So that, that plaque that he talked about, that is, was put there in, in honor of the original, the very first building that you saw in the upper-left hand, and it was paid for by students who I believe were born before World War I. It's on a stone right there. And then there's another plaque that, that would be the building plaque, the one that's now on the Mount Pleasant Building. One thing that happened at National Night Out and was, when, when we had met and Commissioner Smith had kind of drawn out a pencil drawing, you know.
I'm still drawing.
He's still drawing.
He's not wasting his time.
So, so the architects, these guys kind of went, you know, put this together, and when they sent us back this, this, this was a newer rendering, and they put the Mount Pleasant word on it, and I wasn't sure how I felt about that. And we just, we get it, I think, a day before National Night Out, so we put them out and we're getting a lot of feedback, and, and people loved that. And what we started calling it was Mount Pleasant Square, Mount Pleasant Commons, and people really liked that idea.
Yeah.
And so the way that this is kind of, ideas lead to kind of neat things and neat treatments.
Absolutely.
And just the whole idea that square being something
Cool.
You know, a place where people would want to, it was kind of a cool, cool thing.
Yes.
This is a, this is a shot from the other side of the plaza. So the, the treatments within the plaza, you know, it's, it's a, it's a variety of landscaping or hardscaping. I think that, you know, having, having a nice dichotomy between both the hard surfaces and the soft treatments, I think is important as we start to conceive of what this plaza might be, gives, it gives just more opportunity for interesting areas to congregate, interesting areas to sit, and interesting backdrops for each of the buildings to face. But you can start to see in this particular shot, the historic bell, but I think But you can start to see in this particular shot, the historic bell that I think we have or we are going to have, or we're looking for.
The school can't find it. We were going to buy one on eBay and write.
I love it.
Full disclosure. We looked high and low.
I love it.
But again, kind of using those elements to be able to kind of really key in onto the history of what this square plaza means. I'll pass it on to Brett for the fun stuff.
Yes, you have all the fun visioning and concept designs.
Yes.
And I'm left with the costs.
Somebody has to do it.
Somebody does. Tonight it's my turn. First off, just to set a precedent, our firm and our team in particular, on any projects, fire, city hall, police, what be it, we like to set and review other facilities in the region. For police in particular and quite a few fire, we've done most of them. So that comes at ease to review and examine not only standards or in square footages, but also looking at population projections. And then lastly, what we're talking about now is costs. Understanding what these type of facilities cost to the cities that we're putting them in. The chief was going, harping back to the existing facility, which we didn't, you know, I didn't spend a lot of time discussing. For anyone who's been there, the city understands the dire need that they're in to get into a new facility and expand.
Yes, absolutely.
And one component that the chief pointed out was the idea of the facility as a tool. And that's important to know because police facilities in particular are not just an office building. They're not a typical building, they're not a house, they're not even a fire station. And they come with a lot of particulars, both for security as well as maintenance and so forth that go with them to serve their needs, which go beyond a typical building. And to that point, they're generally going to, from a square footage component, they're going to cost more. And so I want to point that out initially, just as we go through this. So in order to examine and look at the facilities that have been built across the northwest, we call them, we poll them, we want to know what, how much they cost, we want to know how big they are. So that's the chart that you're seeing in the department comparisons off to your left. So they look at both staffing requirements as well as sworn officer requirements. But you can also see the size of the cities. You can also see the projections for Oregon City as well. And so that's just for us to do essentially a gut check, make sure we're on the same page. The cost projection to your right was prepared in collaboration with Construction Focus Inc., which we mentioned at the beginning. They're a cost estimator that we use, quite frankly, for these particular facilities. And we give them this concept designs in an effort to best establish the overall vision goal of the building. Because it's obviously not designed yet, you'll see that we've provided cost projections in a range because they can differ, whether that's today or if it's building in, you know, five years, 10 years. Things certainly aren't getting less expensive, they're only getting more expensive as time goes on. And so the range is really intended to help assist with planning. To that, we also want to ensure that future planning efforts account for all costs. You'll find in your reports, a project summary, a cost summary, outlines all the little pieces that we look at as a design firm to ensure that the bottom line number that you're looking at, at the end of the day, is what you need. And will cover your costs and your needs down the road. So you see there's a low and a high range. There's three primary components that we'll point out when we examine costs on a project. First and foremost, the most, or largest piece of the pie is going to be your construction costs. So there's construction costs both for the building as well as the site. You could say that buildings, for the most part, are fairly standardized and their margins for range can be dialed in. Sites, on the other hand, they can vary considerably. If we're building on a highly rocky site, hazardous site, a site with a lot of topography, that changes the variables there. And so we break that out. We also know, and we've discussed, the existing building on the site, knowing that deconstructing that and abating that is going to have a cost to it. And so ensuring that we at least provide an allowance to cover that. And that gives you your subtotal of what we're defining as direct construction costs. The next three components that we look at, we're calling, first off is solar. Really, it's a piece that is defined by the Oregon Department of Energy for public facilities. And that's 1.5% of your construction cost. Your direct construction cost goes towards some type of environmental aspect to your projects. And for the most part, it's typically going to be solar.
And is that state mandated?
That state, yes, that's correct. And so as you can tell, it's not a small dollar amount, so we want to ensure that you're covered there.
Yes.
The next component there is art, and we're carrying 1% there to ensure that that is additionally covered for you.
And that is state mandated too, for public buildings?
And then the last component, which is not state mandated, is a highly recommended from us or any design firm for that fact. And that's simply being owner's contingency. In this instance, it's 5%, which is fairly typical of construction industry. Make sure that unforeseen components are covered or design changes. That gives you your total construction cost range roughly between 13 and 14 and a half million dollars. Which to give you a sense, is really going to be between 250, 275 to 300 dollars a square foot for the project, including the site. The next major component, which, the largest piece will be your architectural engineering fees, which are derived from percentages for the most part. We, instead of these, we set them off actually at the state of Washington's fee structure, which is fairly defined. And that gives you, you apply that also to any project management, marketing materials, geotechnical surveys, costs as well, some of which is being done now. Some will be done in the future. And that gives you your total consultant cost range between 1.5 and 1.7 million. Lastly, there's a whole realm of soft costs, which you've probably heard the term, which covers your FFNE, which is fixtures, furniture and equipment. You have lockers, you have mobile shelving. A lot of equipment goes in these buildings, so we want to ensure that the city and the police department is covered for them. The municipal court also has very particular requirements as far as furniture and cabinetry and casework and security that goes into that as well.
Bulletproof glass.
Yeah, and paneling.
That's important.
Blast resistance, we look at all of that. And there's also, it's a state project, so we have to look at BOLI as well. And then depending on how you fund that, which is a topic of discussion and recommendation on looking back.
So, BOLI, could you explain that for our viewing audience, just so they understand what it is?
So BOLI is a Bureau of Labor. And really, that's the definition of, through the state, of defining the labor rates that are required of any public project, so union rates for that.
So BOLI says that it's a BOLI project and these are what you're going to pay?
That is correct.
Okay.
And often these projects, honestly, whether BOLI or not, because of the construction, it's steel, masonry, they're often going to fall into those realms regardless of which we found.
Right, right. But I want the viewing audience to know that some of these things we just have to put in. Because it's like state law or federal law or whatever that mandate it and don't give us any money to go with the mandates.
That is correct. Thank you, yes. It's important to point that out. And all those components roll up into your total cost range for the initial phase or as we've defined there, which is a 15.6 to 17.8 roughly, million dollars for the project. And that is for the, which was our initial task for the city, was to look at the police court facility as well as the direct site requirements of the building. And so that's to break out the needs of the department. We were also asked to look at the public aspect, which is still undefined, frankly, because, which is actually an important thing because we want it to remain relatively undefined for future involvement from the community. And that's that next component is the total range, public improvement site costs, which has, is 1.5 to 2 million dollars. And that could vary over the course of the future. And so this gives you a sense of costs for the project of at least the conceptual design that we've shown you today. Of course, it's conceptual in nature, and I'm sure to point that out. But it gives you a sense of scale and a sense of what this project could be at the initial phase.
One thing I was going to point out too, that we, the, one benefit of us going on, the school property is not on any tax roll now.
Right.
Our, the piece of property that we're on, we would sell. We have gotten a guesstimate, an educated guesstimate of kind of value, two to three million dollars, depending on exactly when we sold the property. But that property, I know at least one property holder in the area would, said that they would be interested in purchasing it. I think it's a piece of property people would like.
Yeah.
And that would be able to go back on the tax rolls and we would be occupying space that has not been on the tax rolls.
Yes.
That would be a good benefit.
And the money that we receive will go for construction, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Those are all valid points that we need to let the public know.
I might also add that through this process and actually through a close collaboration with the city, we also understand that the newest facility on the site is that NX building. And so knowing that Community Development is located offsite and currently leases space, looking at, you know, how could that building, existing building be reused? Whether, whatever capacity that might be to free up those costs to the city for other means as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Important aspect as well to note.
And that could be used while the other construction is going on, so that would be good. Well, this document is amazing and I read it till my eyes were bloodshot.
I know, I know too.
It brought out the geek in me. It was so interesting though, just everything. And I really appreciate the community outreach at the National Night Out and getting the community's feedback to everything. And I think they understand that the police station has special needs, security needs. And there are certain things that, secure parking and different things that we need. And that that site is an important part of the community. And we can put facilities there and at the same time, still make it really accessible and usable by the community and part of it. So if it can't be a school, at least it can still be for public use.
Well, plus, oh, sorry.
If you had to add on to hers, go ahead. I got a separate question.
Well, I just wanted to say too, if you haven't been through the current police building, you should take a moment and do it and you would be amazed at what these officers go through. So.
You'd be mermaids of what they went through before we moved to City Hall.
Yeah.
That would even work.
And it has to be upgraded anyway because of seismic issues.
Yes, yes.
So it's had to anyway.
I want to go back to my rendering question because the ones I saw here were all front-end renderings. But I noticed you've got covered parking in the back, you've got extended parking to the one side. I hope, I hope this building is inviting for the people that are coming in by automobiles as it is for the people that are using Plaza. And we don't, we don't see that particularly, or I missed it, one of the two.
Well, this drawing here kind of starts to articulate how you may arrive by vehicle. And so in this particular instance, I guess you guys can't really see my laser pointer, but. But you would access the property off of Warner there. And really, that first, actually that one right there, as you come in, as you come into the property with your vehicle, you're presented by the building. The building is front and center.
Yeah.
The other access point is maybe a little bit more secondary in nature. But I could see that if there's a community event, that could become kind of more of the primary access point at that point. So it's actually a pretty good separation, depending on whatever use you might be there to utilize. But I think, but I think that.
So it's your secure parking there and also that other area, that's intended primarily for police vehicles.
It's a nice, yeah.
Yes, yes. The secure parking is for police vehicles.
We don't care how nice it is on the back.
Yeah, we don't care about that. We're throwing the police under the bus here.
Another nice feature, another nice feature of the site is that, you know, it is more or less flat, but there's a slight crown in it.
Yeah.
And as you approach the site from Warner, that's where that crown starts to come up. And so those buildings will sit a little proud of the elevation of the street. So they'll certainly, they will certainly draw your eye to them.
And I'm very excited for 14 to occur. I love the roundabout.
I'm sure John would say that it will be larger than.
There's a roundabout right there, John.
Oh, no.
Right at this point, we're having discussions among commissioners.
14, it says roundabout.
That's right. I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask about. Is this strictly police or is it, will there be an emergency management center here?
Yeah, so the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, right now, the primary one is in the top floor of the fire station here.
Right here.
But it would be, and that's just because we, it's a better place than having it up at the police department. But it would, it would be here. We would have a completely modern EOC here that not just us, but fire, the entire city would use.
The entire city would be able to use it, okay. And then LEED certified?
I think right now, LEED certification is on the table. I think that as we start to look at the, kind of the vision of the project, I think that the sustainable nature of it is certainly a defining element. The requirement for LEED certification, if it's not funded through, if it's only funded through city dollars and not state dollars, is that it's up to the jurisdiction to determine. I don't know if Oregon City has a mandate for public projects to achieve a certain level of LEED certification, but we certainly would encourage you to pursue it.
We had that discussion with the library facility too. And we can build to LEED standards, as I mean, the certification, which is more cost.
Sure. The Oregon Energy Code is very progressive. And just by simply needing Energy Code, you will either, you will get certified or hired by doing that. So I think that as you start to look at a particular project, there's strategies that make sense and there's strategies that don't make a lot of sense. And so we would look at which strategies make sense to implement, which strategies might make a little bit of, some sense to kind of maybe go the extra mile to capture in an effort to reflect the sustainable nature of the development.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering about with water reclamation and green roof and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, these projects certainly could account for a number of those strategies, whether or not it's solar, water conservation, recycled materials, regionally harvested materials, all of those.
One thing to add on to that, which is, that's reflected through the Phase 2 diagram, is that whenever we look at site, we look at storm. Our office also, along with structural engineers, we have civil and landscape. So they're very involved in these conceptual designs. And you can tell here, number five on this diagram reflects stormwater management opportunities. Not only is it an opportunity to maintain your stormwater on site and treat it, but it's also, we use strategies such as those to help break up the parking. So that not only is it inviting as you pull into the site, but it also breaks up what we would call sea parking. Particularly when you have a high demand for such a, for a type of, this type of public use. And then as Scott was saying, aside from the Energy Code, our firm or realistically, any design firm in this region is going to pay very close attention to the sustainable practices that we really feel are responsible design for any facility, particularly a public facility. So this facility, as you look at the renderings, you can tell from some of the clear story windows, the stormwater management, the type of materials, we encourage local materials, well, recycled materials and so forth, that you can kind of pick out those little pieces of design aspects that are already incorporated. And also to know is that are also included as part of that, those cost projections.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I just want to, I think the chief mentioned a couple thoughts about his view of when he first arrived at the police department to now and what has happened. I can kind of share that feeling as well in terms of, I'm kind of shocked, honestly, that it was only 2007 and '08 when we were short 10 police officers. No plan for hiring any in any great number. No talk or even consideration of any type of building in the future. And here we are talking about it. I think that it's a huge leap. And now to know that the library's underway and we're talking about some of these other facilities in the city that we so desperately need to deal with, including parks and public works. in the city that we so desperately need to deal with, including parks and public works and, and everything. I'm, I'm just excited that so much work and effort has been put into this, not only just for our current needs, but I, I don't think, I, I just feel good about this future planning in, in the sense that, you know, when any of us leave this, this place, there's, there's at least property sitting there that something can be built in the future. And I think as the city grows and as we start running out of space, that's going to be a really important factor. Because even prior to the Mount Pleasant site coming available, we all know and all the departments in the city know that the space around the city right now is very limited in terms of building, having property to build facilities. And it's been a challenge especially for public works. So I think that kind of checking these things off, we're, we're getting to narrow in on some of these pieces that, that haven't been thought of for a long time. I grew up on Donald Street right behind Mount Pleasant, went to Mount Pleasant School. It's my neighborhood, family in the police department, past and present. So this is a big thing for me. It's, it's a really exciting piece. I was, you know, concerned and shared with you some of my concerns about how the community would react to the building, the, the Mount Pleasant School site, the, the park space, all those kind of, or the green space. I think it's been all addressed in, in what I think is a very detailed way. The National Night Out event was amazing and I'm, I'm so glad we did it. At, I think at some point I thought, well, is this kind of jumping the gun a little too soon? But it was so great and it was such a help for me because I was, I, and just the National Night Out event, I saw my preschool teacher, my kindergarten teacher, my sixth grade teacher, all these people. Not only that, I saw neighbors that I grew up with that I knew on Donald Street who still live there, right behind the school. People that live across the street from Mount Pleasant. And all of them were excited about this. Every single one of them. Past principals at Mount Pleasant. So I really was glad to see that. So I feel that there's a lot of people that are ready to kind of support and kind of cheerlead for this project. And I think it's a neighborhood that's, that's welcoming to this idea. And I just think the honoring of the history of the building and all these things that we've talked about tonight are just pretty incredible. So I appreciate it and I can't wait to start working on it.
Mr. Fraser?
I'll just dovetail off what Commissioner Smith said there. We will be bringing back now, after this input from the commission, we'll be bringing back to the future commission, the next commission that comes on. We've already started working on some financing ideas and strategies. Obviously, we want to be responsible, like I think we've demonstrated that very much so in the library project and, and trying to save up a large chunk of the money before we actually ask voters to approve an expenditure. And we're going to do similar, good stewarding of this project and try to, it's a bigger price tag, obviously, but we're going to, we're going to do something similar there and try to, try to be as responsible and also creative. We're looking at out of the box ways to try to finance portions of the, of the facility. The other thing I want to say is, it was just four years ago, a little over four years ago, that I started working here and two of you were on the commission at that time. And, and I remember my first meetings with each of you where I said, tell me what's working in Oregon City well and tell me the things that aren't working well. And it wasn't just the two of you. Actually, it was all five of the commissioners at the time said, we feel like we're adrift on a sea of, with no anchor when it comes to future facilities planning and needs and needs assessment. And even though you had just opened this building, I think about a couple of weeks before I started, it was pretty quickly recognized that it wasn't going to, it was more of a 10-year building and not going to be large enough for the future. So I think that in the last couple of years, and particularly in the last 12 months, with the Mount Pleasant opportunity, and Jim, I want to thank you and your department and also McKenzie. And nobody said this, but our department director sat in this room with McKenzie, I don't know how, must have been a half a dozen meetings, and trying to predict what the future needs were going to be and just pouring over these documents, trying to come up with a responsible needs assessment for what our future would look like. And we don't have a crystal ball either. And so we had to try to plan for all of that and all of that went into this plan. And what I like about it is it's probably the single time in the last couple of decades where Oregon City has really made a decision that will have lasting impacts as far as facilities planning, probably more than any time in the last two decades. So thank you guys. Great job. That's all I have.
Commissioner Moon?
I too want to thank you. This is a great report and I was going through online reading and I was, I'd made a comment, please print pages because it was so small. I was having problems reading it and I didn't even have to ask. It was great. I'm excited about this. I think personally, you might think about, and I know it's kind of weird, but you know, adding another floor because in 50 years, where are we going to be? We might be in the same situation that we are right now because we hadn't thought far enough out. I mean, you don't even have to like put anything on the third floor, but just have an empty shell up there in case of, that's my only comment. Thank you.
I want to thank you too. I did want to comment, this will help us finalize our review of the school district. We have not, we have not done that, but that was just basically dependent upon this study. And this will be going forward. I've been asked several times whether we had actually, we had actually procured the property. Both boards agree that it's, it's a good thing to do, both the school board and ours and have come to, I would say, a tentative agreement with that, with that agreement would be. But we weren't really in a position to finalize that kind of a purchase until we had this study, which we do now. And so we are able to go ahead. I, I, I feel guilty here. I'm not sure whether when Brian Shaw put his name up there, it was for Citizens Comments or whether it was for this project. Okay, very good. You want to come forward, Brian? Well, thank you, yeah.
Yeah. You're free.
Well, one of, one of you might remain in case he's got a question, he's got a question. Then he can grab, actually, he can be, you can.
You need the mic.
You don't need a question?
Yeah, he's got to have a mic.
It's the rules.
Well, I said one of the guys could remain, but we could give him another mic too.
All right, Brian Shaw, Oregon City. Having...
Bless you.
Now that was five seconds out of your time.
Really, Mo. Anyway, you know, having spent a number of years on the historic review board, you develop kind of a, kind of a little passion for older buildings in this community. And so when I heard that the Mount Pleasant building was probably going to get repurposed, I thought, well, that's kind of exciting, you know? At the same time, I'm assisting Mo on the building committee for the library, where we're, you know, putting a complimentary addition on that one. And so a couple of good things were going on. Then I went to National Night Out and I started walking up to Chief Band and his little presentation on the wall there and stuff, et cetera. Where's the building actually? I don't see the school building. Where's, where's this at? And so he started walking me through it. I'm still, you know? And so I had to go home and kind of think about this a little bit, you know? Number one, we actually have a lot of old school buildings. We're trying to repurpose now. And, you know? But, you know, we have to, and Commissioner Smith's right, we have kind of a limited supply of land in this city. And we have to look at the highest and best use of that land now. And so I had to kind of weigh this all out. And I'll tell you, after thinking about when Chief Band walked me through this and everything and then, and looking at the presentation and stuff, I think that this is a, it's a great project. I'm a little sensitive to that building, only that my uncle actually was a principal there for 15 years, up until 75, you know? And so I kind of had to weigh this all out. But in the end, I think this is a great project and I can really appreciate what staff has gone through here, especially in the last five years when we're starting to project these out 10, 20 years or so. You know, that is, that takes a lot of planning and meetings and what you have to go through to do that. Because we've had situations where we haven't done that and we're going to pay for that, so.
Yes.
So anyway, I, I, it's, it's a great project and, and knowing that the future city hall's going to possibly on there down the road is, is also a great thought too. So anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Mori?
Karen Mori, still from Oregon City and interestingly, one of the absolute totally nearest neighbors to this project. It's going to be about 20 feet from my patio door. You'll be very safe. And I have already welcomed the chief to the neighborhood.
Karen, do you know where the bell is?
Oh, no, actually, I, that's going to be one of my closing comments, so just hang on here. All right, so I have some odd, this, you're going to get a little history lesson here, but also some odd connections to this. In 1912, the city of Oregon City built a library. It was the first purpose-built library ever constructed in the city. In the early 1920s, the city built the McCold Building, which is on Main Street between 7th and 8th, where Funnel Box is now. That was the first ever purpose-built city hall. Upstairs, there was an office for the city manager, the water department and the court. That was the city government at the time. Along the alley was a roll-up door for the one police car. And in that garage was a small office for the chief and one officer. At the same time, they also built the John Adams Fire Station. Eventually, they hired, yeah, the 5th, 6th, you know, we're getting a huge city staff going here now and there's no room in the city hall anymore. So the city offices were transferred to the fire station.
Yes.
Eventually, the police department needed a home and, I mean, this is just temporary. We're just putting city hall temporarily at the fire station. We're going to put the police department temporarily in the Hedges House, which is where the Urban Tinger House now stands. A two-story with basement residence. The sergeant's office was in the dining room. The kitchen was subdivided into dispatch and a small kitchenette.
They have a shower.
The, it had, they actually put another shower room in upstairs. That was nice. There were jail cells in the basement. I worked work-study in the early 70s in that beautiful house and records was in kind of the living room area of the house. We rapidly ran out of room for filing cabinets. I liked the million plus for fixtures because we were filing in donated boxes from Morgan Distributing that used to hold cases of beer.
I love it.
You could fold the reports in thirds, put them on their sides and stack them on top of the filing cabinets because we'd run out of room. Eventually, yes, eventually the city in its great wisdom buys a really not-so-great building in the first place that the state's trying to unload because they built a new welfare office. That was temporary. We now know what happened with that. Oh yeah, the police department's still there. The city hall is in a beautifully renovated building that we did all know eventually would be outgrown. And I do find it humorous that the Oregon City's definition of temporary is 100 plus a smidge years. So if this comes online in 2020, we're right on schedule with Oregon City's definition of temporary. Now, needless to say, I am 1,000% in favor of this. I agree with Brian. At some point, you can't preserve everything. It's a beautiful site. The police department definitely needs better quarters, finally. I think the one-car garage was the best place you ever were. And on the topic of bells, we do have a bell that we can't explain in one of the garages of the Stevens Crawford House.
That's it.
Now, if somebody would like to help me declare that that is the Mount Pleasant Bell, you can move it.
Karen, it's not the bell from, oh no, it can't be. I was going to say the bell from the US Oregon City, but that's at US of Oregon City and that's a moot, right?
Yep. Yeah, there, there is absolutely no identification on this very heavy bell. So hey, come look at our bell.
There you go.
I think we've got our bell.
Wouldn't that be great?
Thank you for that history lesson, Karen.
That's great.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time here and it's exciting for all of us.
Yes.
I'm glad that we're getting this underway. Now we've got actual work to do. We've got general business. Second reading ordinance 14-1009 approving the election results from planning file AN 1301 and annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City. We passed on the first reading. Tony, is there anything else that you want to say?
Nope. Just requested you approve the second reading.
Move to approve second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 14-1009.
First, firsted by Betty Bum and seconded by Carol Paul.
And the reading ordinance number 14-1009, an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City and approving the May 20th, 2014 election results for planning file AN 13-01.
Vote please. Unanimous. And now we're going to have an ordinance for introduction, number 14-1010, an ordinance vacating existing 26-foot-wide public alleyway between lots 2 and 3 and 6 and 7 of block 117 of the Oregon City subdivision. And that will be back to John Lewis.
So there's not a lot to add here. Last meeting, we brought back resolution number 1420, which initiated this process. So we're asking the city commission to approve this ordinance. The first reading of this ordinance requires two readings of the ordinance. This property is, property that the Barclay School was built on. And it's really a, I think, back in 1974, there was an oversight or a misstep. I'm not really sure because they vacated other, other right-of-way in that block, but not the alleyways. So the alley, the, the building is actually sitting on the alleyways, a portion of the alleyways. So this is just cleaning that up, vacating the alley. There's no public utilities. There's no public access needs there. It's really just cleaning that up and, and doing what should have been done back in 19, probably, probably even before 1974 because the building's older than that.
I have a question. You said it's 26-foot-wide alley?
Right.
What are the alleys typically in?
They're normally not that wide.
Yeah, ours is 14.
Yeah, normally they're not that wide.
Notice this is the Oregon City plat. It's been around for a while.
Yes.
It was, actually, I think it was McLaughlin's plot.
Yes.
Yes.
From 19, from 1850.
Move to approve ordinance number, for the first reading, ordinance number 14-1010.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Are you kidding me?
Ah, I think Kathy beat you.
Your voice is passing through your finger. Moved by Commissioner Mum and seconded by Commissioner Roth.
Ordinance number...
Oh, reading, excuse me.
Ordinance number 14-1010, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City vacating the 26-foot-wide public alley located between lots 2 and 3 and between lots 6 and 7, all of block 117 of the Oregon City plat, a duly recorded plat in Oregon City, Clackamas County, State of Oregon.
The vote please. Again, unanimous. Now we'll go to the, the item from the consent agenda that's a full non-remonstrous agreement for the Aspen Ridge subdivision and the dipartition projects, planning file TP 1301, MP 1304.
So these are two different properties, not related at all. We're just, and, but there's something that we require of every... something that we require of every land use development that comes through the city. It's a restrictive covenant of non-remonstrance agreement, and it basically is something that is recorded against the property, and it could be used by the city. It's required by code. It could be used by the city to help a local improvement district proceed without objection from the property owners that fall within, that fall within these areas. So all new lots associated with new developments, we record this. And by code, it's required that the mayor sign this, and that the city commission authorize the mayor to sign these documents. So what, what that means is if the city chose to identify a project that, and the mechanism by which they funded that was through a local improvement district, then local improvement district, our code on local improvement district has requirements that 51% of those property owners approve that local improvement district. And with, with these, with this restrictive agreement, non-remonstrance agreement, those property owners essentially lose that ability to vote for that, unless the city commission makes a decision to still allow them to vote for that. So we never, we've not, not that I know of implemented this, but we've not necessarily utilized this kind of an agreement, but it's something that we've always required them to sign.
Let me give an indication why I think this, this came into existence. You have a, let's say, a public entity, you have a public benefit, or I should say, the people in the community have a public benefit that they want to see occur, and they can vote on that. And you have a new subdivision coming in, and it may not apply to a new subdivision, because they've all built to the current standards. And so you might have the vote of new people coming in and saying, well, this isn't my problem, it's your problem, but they're still within the same area. And I think it's one of the reasons this non-remonstrance, remonstrance agreement came into place, and then the attorney can say, no, that's not the reason at all.
I think that's part of it. I think another part of it is sometimes the new development comes in that does, isn't required to build everything that it might, everything that it might need. And so what we say is, we're going to let you build now, because there's enough to serve you and your neighbors, but at some point in the future, we may need to expand it. And because you're part of the need for that expansion, we're going to ask you to waive your ability, ability to be counted as part of the veto for a local improvement district to make this improvement that benefits your property. And so it's really kind of, we're going to forego forcing you to do something now, but in order to do that, we're going to ask you to, to give up the ability to veto things later.
So is that like a state-mandated?
It's not state-mandated. The, the local improvement district statute sets out, you know, what you have to do, and actually, we have in our charter, you know, the amount, the city charter, the amount of people remonstrances, objections, saying, you know, no, I don't want this to be done. And so the process is kind of set out in the state, but it doesn't, it's not required of all development. I will tell you, it's a fairly common tool. Most cities do require these non-remonstrance agreements as part of the development process.
So we can't blame everything on the state.
Oh, I'd like to. And they didn't give us any money with that, did they?
No, they didn't.
Is there, is there anything more with that?
No, that was.
I know, I know these have been before the commission, and you just like to explain those.
And I think we need that reminder every now and then as to what that means.
Yeah, I agree. What purpose of it is.
Okay, pass the motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Well, we didn't, excuse me, we haven't approved the item before.
Look, you said consent agenda.
No, no, come back, we haven't approved the thing that was taken off this.
Right.
That's what's up here.
Okay, so move to approve 8D.
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And seconded by Rocky Stiel.
Congratulations, Rocky. And we don't have to, the consent agenda otherwise passes.
We have to vote on the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Roth. Vote, please. Unanimous. With that, we'll go to communications from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind the commission that on September 5, 2014, at 10:00 a.m. here in the chambers, state representatives Brent Barton and Bill Kenner will be hosting a dedication ceremony for a fallen Oregon City native, U.S. Navy SEAL Tyrone Snowden-Woods, who sacrificed his life in Benghazi, Libya on September 12, 2012, while serving in the United States military. The city commission and public are invited to attend the reception, and I wanted, just wanted to remind.
So that's this Friday, 10:00 a.m. here.
Yes, yes. Then also, I wanted to update the commission, I, probably for an hour or two each week of the last several weeks, I've been making telephone calls to other city managers around the state, in, mostly in cities above 20,000 that might have an interest in the right-of-way issue, because we know that there's been some talk from the county, at least, that they may wish to curtail home law authority with regard to right-of-way fees and so forth. So I've, I've now completed most of those phone calls, and I've gotten, I've been actually really encouraged by the number of cities that have gotten engaged in this issue. And the League of Oregon Cities has been a tremendous asset in leading that charge. We are starting to see most of the larger cities in Oregon that really have probably more influence than most coming on board with our position on this. And today, we got a letter from Mayor Denny Doyle in Beaverton, and I just wanted to share, I have copies here for you. I know I emailed it to you as well, but I thought I would pass that out. And we're continuing those conversations, of course. Every week, we, just about every week, we talk to the league about how things are going, and this turned out to be in the top four priorities for 44 of Oregon's, of the, of the total number of cities in Oregon, 44 of them thought this was in their top four. And so that's, we're not, we're not in this by ourselves, and I actually believe myself that, given that the Supreme Court in Oregon has now decided to hear the Phoenix case, I worked at a court of appeals, so there, there's really a couple of different possibilities, I think, and Bill and I have talked about this, because you clerked also at an appellate court. What could this mean? And it, it's hard to say for sure, but it, it means one of two things. Either the court thinks that the string of court of appeals decisions that have favored cities needs a resounding exclamation point on it, so that the litigation might stop. Or they think the string of cases the court has, of appeals has issued is, is off base somehow. I'm betting on the earlier one, but you never know. But that does mean that, for the legislature at least, when this, something is pending at the Supreme Court, if I'm a legislator, I'm wondering, why am I being drug, drug into something when the Supreme Court hasn't issued an opinion yet? And the opinion could be two or three years away. So I, I feel pretty good about our ability to maintain our right-of-way ordinance as you adopted it. And of course, anything changes, I'll keep you updated along the way. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I think that's all, nothing else.
Just as a quick follow-up, the League of Oregon Cities has listed five topics of discussion at the city hall meeting. There were votes of all the, well, there, all cities could vote on what they, we went through our priority list, and three, I think three out of the five of us agreed on, on similar, three items to be sent out to be given the greatest priority. That was one of them, maintaining that right-of-way ordinance, the, also, one of the items that we had there was, in fact, the ability of cities to have their own legislation in terms of the presence of medical marijuana dispensaries, that's in the, in the top list. The cities that voted, less than half of the cities voted, but those half cities that voted on the priority listing that we have before us represented 85% of the population of the state. And four of those five, in fact, have been taken, along with another one, that was, I think, number six, has been taken forward by the League of Oregon Cities. These will be the topics of discussion at the League of Oregon, at our, excuse me, our city hall meeting that's coming up. My understanding is the planning arrangements that we're having is, the state representatives will be the panel, there will be tables there for elected representatives of the cities within those two senate districts. And they will put forward most of the questions to the panel, and then the general public that attends will have a opportunity later to put forward things. This is, this is the recommendations that we're following from Vern Duncan, who is our moderator. The other things that I, I wanted to mention was that we require a voting member at the League of Oregon City Conference that's coming up from September 25th and 26th. Carol, Commissioner Polly, and myself are the ones that signed up, but I'm not going to be there the whole time, so I'm going to put forward as the voting delegate, Commissioner Polly. I'll be an alternate, but I, the alternate will probably not be there to, to vote. But that, I don't know that really requires Commission, Commission vote on that, but I wanted to let you know she'll be, she'll be our representative. The, we just covered that. The other things I wanted to mention are, a, I, Commissioner, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll leave it to the act discussion for you to cover.
Yeah, I'll have that.
And if I have something else to add, I will do it later. We have two positions on the national, on the national, on the natural resource committee to fill, and the one position on the budget committee will leave open into the next year, because the budget committee will not meet until next year, so that would be an appointment made by the, the next mayor. And I had a couple compliments to render. I had a member of public send me a rather long email, appreciating the tremendous job that Eric Hand did in terms of a sewer issue that was there. They found him very responsive and, and thought, thought he was a tremendous public servant in terms of the, of the effort that he put out there. And I want to give my personal commendations to the public works department. It looks like our pavement management fee is being used throughout the city. There are projects going on South End Road, Clermont, Jackson, Washington Streets. Do you want to add some more? Several projects in the city.
South End, did you mention?
Yeah, I mentioned that one.
Gaffney.
I mentioned that one.
Okay.
Okay. I think, I think almost everybody.
We'll take twice as much credit.
I think almost everybody in the city is beginning to recognize how those, those funds are being utilized. I just want to congratulate, congratulate you.
Yeah, I think our government's done a good job with that.
What I'll do is, I'll start to my left again. Commissioner Polly, do you have anything to comment on?
I'll put my Main Street hat on. It was great to have the Antique Fair back down on Main Street this year. I had never been there that early in the morning before, and it was like a little city down there, and all the volunteers, I just want to say kudos to all the volunteers that make that happen, and the collaboration between Main Street, the merchants, and the chamber this year, I think, was, was great. It was nice to see that, and it was, it was a success, so it was good to see that back down there. Main Street's moving along nicely with Jessica Gago, she's the new marketing and activities director down there, events. And so she is moving all her stuff up this week, and she is getting to work with that, and so hopefully, there'll be new events coming online that I'll be able to announce. Lots of things going on.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Roth?
Yeah. Wanted to remind everybody that September is emergency preparedness month, so get your kits ready. Couple of things that are being highlighted this year are family communications after disasters, and having everybody in the family know who to call and what to do after disaster, and also preparation for people with functional needs, which are sometimes different and that we, we often don't think about. And also, September 30th is the regional disaster. We're going to have a 5.5 earthquake in the Portland Hills Fault, so everybody be ready, and it'll be, all of Portland and Monloma County will be involved in this.
A simulation.
Yes, that's what it.
Yes.
That's why I could announce it.
Well, yeah, we have to say that again, though. So, what was that?
The last thing is, I had the privilege of having two of the Japanese people come stay with me during the Sister City celebration, and one of them is the economic development director from Tadashina, and his name is Tatsuya, cannot say the last name. But he brought with him information from a manufacturing plant that we visited there, and wanted to know about the possibility of hooking up in Oregon and bringing something here. So Eric has been working with the state on finding grants and different things, so we're working on it.
Commissioner Mum?
I just have a couple of comments, but first, I wanted to let the commission, everybody, know why I had withdrawn from the race. I had, when the election was open, I had waited a few weeks to see who was going to file, and when nobody did, I just went ahead and threw my name in the ring, and then on the last day, there was two people that did file. So I felt very comfortable pulling out. I have purchased a new business, and being a first-time business owner, it is kind of nerve-wracking to have people relying on you for your, their income. So this will give me a great opportunity to cultivate that business and grow that business. And as always, like every bad penny, I will be back in some form or another. I will have my eyes open, talking about the roundabout that I want, and making all the comments, and still picking on Commissioner Smith as much as possible. So I just, I just kind of felt that that was the best thing for me to do. I think that I, I've really enjoyed my time. I think we have a great staff, and I will be happy to work on any committees you want me to.
You're not done yet, Betty.
I know. I got a couple months.
You've got four months. Not a couple, you've got four months.
So now, back to business. As you know, I sit on the C4 committee, and we are talking about forming an act in Region 1, which Region 1, and John, and the mayor could probably help me with this, is Clackamas County part of?
Part of Clackamas County. It's actually part of all the counties, even got a little bit of Hood River in it, and so it's got, Region 1 for ODOT's different than the county lines, for sure.
Okay.
But it kind of covers the metro area, south, Wilsonville, and then goes up to the river, goes east and west, past Hillsborough, and out to Hood River, so it's.
Yeah.
It's a pretty large area.
So it, it's a large area, and so we're kind of looking at, and I, I'm sure it's going to happen, there will be an act formed, which is an area commission on transportation. And the reason why we want to form this act is so that we can have a seat at the table when they're talking about transportation dollars. So the mayor and John and David Fraser and I met to talk about the structure of the act, and I believe the mayor felt that there would be a vote due probably in November on how the structure will be. So there will be a lot more discussion on that. But just to let everybody know, C4 has been canceled for Thursday, which is tomorrow, so there will be no C4 subcommittee or regular meeting. And October is the retreat for C4. So I don't know if staff was planning to attend, or if anybody was interested in attending. Do you know? Have you thought about it?
Well, I'm hoping they'll have a good agenda, and if so, then.
The act is going to be on that agenda.
Yeah, so.
Just so you guys know.
I'd be planning to go up there each day.
Yeah.
Try and hit those hours that make sense.
Okay. And then, what was my last one? Oh, I think that was, I think that's all, so.
Commissioner Smith?
I have quite a lot, but I'm going to go, I'll go as quick as I can. Several heritage meetings, Oregon City Heritage Council, or Heritage Coordinating Committee, and Oregon City Tourism Council. Tourism Council is representative heritage groups all over. Tourism Council is representative heritage groups all over Oregon City, and it's open to whoever wants to be involved in that. We are the group that creates the TAP Plan for the city, which is the Tourism Action Plan for the city, and get grant requests essentially for tourism projects. The $20,000 that comes to the city essentially for tourism projects is dispensed to that group and through Michelle Benfield. So, it's similar to OCCIT. Made a presentation to the county about our projects for the past year that have been done in Oregon City. My main concern in the past has been that a lot of the heritage organizations try to propose projects that are small in nature, that usually benefit that organization through one event or something like that. And I've, in the past, we've come together kind of in a larger view and said, "How can we do projects that benefit the whole city?" So, we kind of took a step back, I think, in this, this last year. And when I made the presentation, I, I pretty was, I was vocal to the Tourism Council group about my concern that we weren't using that money as good as we could, in, in the sense that I felt that the projects could be broader instead of individual organizations proposing projects, that all the organizations combined should present a project that benefits all they all. And I, and apparently, when I presented that to the TDC Board, they felt the same way.
Oh, that's good.
So, there's going to be some discussions about that, I think. And every year, the TDC Board kind of goes through their criteria to decide. Basically, the TDC Board issues money to various communities in the county, and then those committees issue that money out to projects in their city. The next meeting for Oregon City Tourism is September 8th. We'll start talking about the projects for this next upcoming year, and anyone can come to that meeting and propose projects relating to tourism. The Oregon City Heritage Coordinating Council is planning the Spirits of Oregon City, which is a walking tour that happens usually the Saturday at the end of October. This one is on the 18th, and will be including various historic houses in the neighborhood. And went to the Filbert Run and the Glen Oak Open House for those two parks. I think there was a lot of people there, and a lot of great discussions about both those parks. Very unique discussions and very unique to the neighborhood. It was interesting to see how different each neighborhood saw their park and, and what they wanted to do with it. Because of Glen Oak Park's proximity to the high school, there's a lot of interest at the high school and a lot of interest from students, especially in the construction class because of their work with the city in the past. So, we're in, we're trying to get the next open house for Glen Oak Park at the high school, and I'm still working on that with Scott, and, but I think it's going to be at the, the high school on October 9th. So, that should be cool. Sister City events were amazing. I really enjoyed that. And wanted to talk about tomorrow morning. Tomorrow morning, Oregon City-Wesland Breakfast. We did the proclamation last week. This, the Oregon City-Wesland Breakfast is a tradition that's been going for a long time. The actual rivalry football game between the two schools has been going on for 94 years. Started in 1921, '22, when the bridge was built. And the breakfast is usually on the Tuesday morning, but since Wesland's no longer in our league, it's now not a league game. And so, it was the first week of school, and the first Tuesday was the first day of school. And so, the breakfast is tomorrow. The football game is 7:30 at Wesland High School on Friday night. But tomorrow morning, the Oregon City-Wesland Breakfast is open to the public, or anyone that wants to wake up and be at the Elks Lodge at 6:30 in the morning. $10 for breakfast, and it's, it's a really cool event where both football teams from both schools come, the coaches, the athletic directors, the principals, the rally, the, I always say rally, sorry, cheerleaders.
[laughing]
And the mayors of both cities, and really, really cool event. Tomorrow, the guest speaker will be Ed Burton, who was the football coach for a long time, was the football coach when I was there. And I did the total, and I'll have to give this to the mayor later. So, I did the program for the morning that has the list of the history of the game, and this, like I said, is the 94th year. There were 42 wins for Wesland so far, 50 for Oregon City. So, we're still ahead. And you might say, "Well, that doesn't add up to 93." Well, there was one tie, and the one tie was in 1936, where Oregon City and Wesland tied 0-0.
[laughing]
Good defense.
There's no ties anymore. And I thought some of the other interesting things were, the biggest blowout was, and I've said this before, probably 1930, Oregon City beating Wesland 91 to 0. The longest winning streak for Wesland was nine years. Nine years in a row they won, from 2003 to 2011, as our mayor likes to point out, the entire time that Alice Norris is mayor.
[laughing]
And the longest winning streak for Oregon City was six. In fact, we had two winning streaks of six years in a row, 1929 to '34, and 1985 to 1990. So, anyway, cool history, and that'll be tomorrow, and then the game Friday night.
Fun.
In all honesty, was that it then?
Yeah.
In all honesty, I have to accept one of those nine years under my tenure.
Oh!
Yes, true, right.
But I rallied the groups at the second year.
Was it the last one? It was the?
Last two, the last two we won, right?
Yeah, right.
So, we got a streak of two going, and I'll, I'll really, I'll really give the Oregon City team a roaring pep talk about, "We've got to win eight more in a row."
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're ranked fourth in the preseason for Oregon City.
Very good.
Yeah, we're, we're ranked pretty high, so it's, it's exciting.
Yes.
I wanted to come back to the acts. As Commissioner Mum, I'm the alternate to the C4, but also, they have a C4 Metro meeting where certain, where certain items are going before the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which I serve on, and I attend those meetings. Wanted to come back to these acts. When we discussed them, you may recall, I think, one of the commission meetings, you, you passed out the four options, and these are options that ODOT has for establishing acts. We had a discussion, and the one that we felt was most suitable was a, a two act situation in which the metro region served as one act, and that was basically because of the inter-transportation needs of those, of those cities within the metro region. And the other was made of a rural act that dealt with the rural areas of Clackamas County and Washington County. There doesn't appear to be an option there to break those two pieces out into a separate act. There was another structuring that we kind of rejected that took Mulhalla out of an act and put it in with Mid Willamette Valleys Act, and that made no sense because most of the people's connections are with Oregon City. If you sit on Highway 213 at rush hour, and, and you'll, you'll see a great deal of traffic is coming from the Mulhalla area. And the, the other thing, I'm going to ask our library director, you, we've got a, we've got something going at the library tomorrow evening, is that right?
Yeah, we have an open house at the library tomorrow evening, and the architects will be there from 5:00 to 7:00 doing a presentation of the five building design concepts that you guys will have presented to you next week.
Very good.
We'll try to show it, take a little bit of feedback and tweet what they got.
And the Chamber of Commerce is having a candidates forum tomorrow evening, starting at 5:30, I believe, at the.
5:30, yeah.
At the.
VFW.
The VFW, which is sort of, sort of up the, up the McLaughlin Promenade from the Museum of the Oregon Territory. And that starts at 5:30. It involves not only the people running for Oregon City seats on the commission, but also involves those people running for our state offices as well. With that, I thank anything else for the good of order. With that, adjourned.